Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. It is now six o'clock and I will call the planning commission meeting to order at this moment. And with that, can we do roll call, please?
Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Wallace?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
All here, one opening.
Pull your mic towards you, please. There you go.
Just in time for us all to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And before we move any further into the agenda, I wanted to make note of a change in the contents of the meeting that I was provided that we were not going to discuss Babs Meadows quasi judicial hearing tonight. And with that, I would like to make motion that we remove that portion from the agenda, which is item number six, the quasi judicial hearing on Babs Meadows rezoned.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Lynn?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
McLeod?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you.
I went, yeah, yes.
I believe it's already been rescheduled. You'll have to check the city site. It will be, yes, it will be discussed in depth at a later date.
And I apologize, I have no further information.
It will go before city council.
Thank you, Margaret, for clarifying that. We don't know why. So there's nothing we can add to that. And and we do want to hear from all of you at a later date because that's important information. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for sharing.
Don't think you won't get a chance to talk about it at a later date because you will and we want to hear what you have to say. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate all of you.
And you have no obligation to stay more, but you can, please.
Thank you for coming. We look forward to hearing from you at a later date.
Okay, okay, and with that, we will, I guess. Wait. Okay, okay, now we're going to move into, we actually have a hearing on the quasi judicial hearing.
Excuse me a second, Jeannie, we need to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Yes. Now we're going to move to approve the, for the approval of the meeting minutes.
I'd like to go ahead and suggest we re-approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And so with that, we're going to move into a public hearing tonight. We actually have three other hearings scheduled tonight, other than the one that was just excused. The first one is going to be regarding, well, I guess I'll open the meeting. The following procedure is used by the planning commission to meet the appearance of fairness. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting at the time is 6:04. This open public hearing is for the purpose of the consideration of the proposed conditional use permit for auto repair. We will proceed in orderly fashion and I would like to ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. When you address the commission, begin by stating your name and address and please speak slowly and slow, slowly and clearly into the microphone. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would need to remind the audience and commission that the Washington state law requires that public meetings and hearings like the ones being held tonight not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. Washington state law prohibits members of the planning commission from communicating with members of the public considering the subject of a public hearing outside of the public hearing meeting. In addition, Washington state law prohibits planning commission members from participating in a hearing or a decision in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the city's decision. An objection to any planning commission member hearing this item needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters that are before us that in this meeting, this hearing today, whether we had any expertise communication.
Okay, we'll start with me. I'm Commissioner McLeod and I have no financial interest in the matters being and I have spoke to no one about it, so I have no prejudice at this time.
Commissioner Lynn, I have no financial obligation to any of this and I have no opinion one way or the other about this, this time.
Dawn?
Yes, I've not been connected with this and I'm not familiar with it and I have no part of it. So I would, I would say that, so it's pretty much what Michelle said, so that's how I stand.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I have had no communication or other interactions with this effort either. So let the record show, there were no declarations. And is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any of the commission members hearing? Any of the items on the agenda tonight? If so, come forward and let us know. Okay, that's not, so with that, we will allow the, let's see, we're calling, referring to, we're going to allow the staff, we will review the staff report and we will allow the professional planner from AHBL to present a, a report and a proposal.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Nicole Stickney. I'm here with AHBL and this is one of the items that we had begun previously in terms of processing this for the city. And so we have prepared the staff report for this conditional use permit tonight. The matter before you is a conditional use permit to allow minor auto repair within an existing auto parts retail store that's located within your C1 commercial zoning district. And the address for that property is 701 Ninth Street. And the parcel number and legal description, as well as other details, have been provided in the staff report for you. The applicant is Alex Weaver. He submitted an application to introduce minor auto repair to an existing building, which contains an auto parts repair retail store. The proposed auto repair use would have a footprint of about 1,340 square feet on the western portion of the existing building. And they're also proposing to cite a 400 gallon above ground storage tank. They're going to do repairs such as brakes, tiny belts, electrical fixtures, oil changes, flat tires, and so forth. All of these activities are closely related and described in Benton City Municipal Code, Section 20 dot 09 dot 370, the definition for service stations. We noted that a service station is permitted in the C1 district as a conditional use. So that means they have to go through a public hearing and review by the planning commission, following that review by the city council in order to obtain a conditional use permit. And as the name implies, conditions of approval can be attached to such review. All of the public notification requirements were met for this case and we have provided suggested findings of fact showing how the proposal fits in with the review criteria as listed in your code. Just not to go into too much detail, but just to do a quick overview or highlight, this, we've formulated findings that you could adopt, which say that this proposal would not be detrimental to public health or safety. Obviously, we've reviewed it for connections to water, sewer, and electric facilities. We've reviewed for environmentally critical areas in which there are then any hazardous waste need to be disposed of according to state regulations for that. We don't believe that this would create any nuisance condition to adjoining properties. Further, this could be compatible and in harmony with the area of, as we noticed, this building has been in place for some time and appears that a extension of their auto parts retail use to more service, auto oriented services fits in with what's going on there already and with the zoning district allowed for and so forth. So we've sort of detailed that analysis for you that you can adopt if you wish to do so. For this project, no conditions of approval were recommended for us and therefore, we recommend that after you hold a public hearing to receive public comment and testimony, you consider adopting a motion, setting forth findings and boarding a recommendation of approval to city council for consideration in their final action. We have also recommended a motion that you can use if you'd like that. And as you see in the staff report, we have provided the exhibits to include a site plan since you could review that, the application that was filed by the applicant, together with a title report and other materials pertaining to the property. Thank you for your time this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions if they have, either before or after taking public comment.
Commissioner? Commissioners? Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant up to present their request and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Alex Weaver. I am at 504 Ninth Street, Benton City. I just wanted to take a second and briefly describe and, and I guess just cover what we're planning to and our intentions. So as, as Nicole already stated, it's going to be minor auto repair. So that means there's going to be no major engine repair or anything that, you know, would cause some sort of EPA issue or, you know, any sort of problems with fluids. So we've been working with the EPA and the planning in city to kind of make sure that none of these things are harmful to the environment, et cetera. In addition to that, I wanted to also state that we have a drop yard for the used cars that were, I guess, originally parked outside that looked a little crowded. As any business owner knows, it takes, it takes time and money to make things happen. So as the, the process has gone on, we have moved every single car that has had any issues or has been beat up aesthetically and is now moved into a completely private fence area so it doesn't affect any of the aesthetics of our downtown. In addition to that, I just wanted to state that we have every intention of continuing to revitalize the downtown of Benton City and have spent thousands of dollars rehabilitating the 701 building without tampering with its historic aspect of it because that building is, is, in my opinion, one of the nicest buildings in the downtown and, and has a lot of value. So thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, the floor is over for a public comment now, if anybody has any. Very none, aye? Would the applicant like to say anything else in regard to this effort or?
I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
I guess if I had a question, it would be, do you have an overflow plan for vehicles that won't fit in your yard or will you just only take the amount of vehicles that you can handle at one time?
Yes.
Excuse me, Alex needs to talk into the mic.
To the microphone, please. Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah, so to answer your question, I guess briefly, the cars that have been slightly wrecked and have aesthetic issues, those are being used for the retail aspect of, of the store. So any, there will be no overflow. We are not allowing the tenant to have any of those broken cars outside of that fenced area. In terms of servicing vehicles, I have specifically asked not to have an overflow of vehicles in terms of exactly what we're going to do if there's, you know, a bunch of, of cars wanting service. We, there's parking downtown as well as some other areas on, on Della Avenue. But besides that, there will be no broken or wrecked cars that will be in, in, in view of that.
Right, and we did okay prior businesses with vehicles and we just want to make sure that there's no oil leakage into the ground or any of that.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. That, that's the only question I had. If someone else wants to come up and say their name and who they are and where they live?
Hey, come on up, Jeannie, I think. Did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jane Combs, Code Enforcement. So, because I am just interested in how the process works. So there is that concern about the extra cars on the outside. Is that something that is regulated through like a condition in the approval or, you know what I mean? Since I am code enforcement, if let's say, okay, yeah, the guy is in agreement. You obviously know, right, that they're not supposed to be parked, but what if they do start to park on the outside? I'm looking for an enforcement kind of aspect, you know, is that, is that part of it like a condition of the approval or is that just?
I think that each business has a recommended amount of space. And if it becomes an overflow problem, that does have direct contact with the city. And I imagine that that would go through city hall and then they go through you and go through the moves because he's not really next to the residential. He's a few blocks from there and people randomly park all the time, but I would not ever think it would be recommended to use all that parking for cars that aren't leaving.
Right, okay, I was just checking to see how that worked. Thank you.
And I guess to add on that, to, to make the point, the, the cars that are being worked on or are going to be worked on are not going to necessarily be the beat up cars. So if those ones are parked and they're waiting for service, it's not going to be as much as an eyesore as, I don't know, I drive past it all the time. It was really bugging me to see, you know, there was a kind of a semi wrecked car on the south side of the building. So that, that was made very clear that that cannot happen. And I apologize for it, even being there in the first place is just, again, things take time.
And they have been very compliant, so.
I imagine the random parkers will just be customers popping in and out.
Was that another question in the back? Somebody just pointing at the screen. With their comment on. Okay, I can't see it. Is somebody attempting to comment? Oh, okay, okay, so can we move forward then without them being able to access the hearing? Okay, I'll assume they have no comments then at this point. So with that, I will assume the testimony portion of this hearing is now closed at.
Wait a minute, I'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
This is Don Allen. I'm concerned about, I recently found that when I went, I talked to somebody about getting service done on a rig, on a car or a truck, whatever it may be. And sometimes these businesses get very busy and so you're just going to have to wait your turn. And I understand that. The thing of it is, if you have a large amount of people that come to want to use their services and want to change oil, want to do this, want to do that, you're going to have to take your place in line with anybody else. So you're going to have to do that on, on a basis where maybe some of the parts are available. Maybe some of the things aren't. They might get started on something, have to stop in midstream because they can't get the parts, so the car goes outside, it sits and waits. Then somebody else comes in, you get two or three cars in there, you're all working. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying that's how things are at this time, I think, is that we have to wait our turn. And with this, there's not a lot of places that you can have a lot of customers' cars and cars are being serviced and cars, people that come up and want services. There's not a lot of room around there to do that. So I wondered how you were going to handle that type of thing because it could happen very easily. It doesn't take a long time for maybe to do an oil change, but maybe you don't have the filter or you don't have the part or you don't have this, so it backs up. So and have all these different parts for all these different cars. We don't have a store anymore, so that's going to be a problem where they're going to get their parts. They're going to have to wait for them to come in from the, from the Tri-Cities to get them here. So what do you do during the meantime? That car goes out, it waits its turn, the next one comes in, that came, same thing scenario goes over and over. So I'm concerned about that. I think that probably that's, maybe they're thinking about that myself, but I would like their, I would like Mr. Weber's, Weaver's comment on that if I could.
Absolutely, thank you, Don. I guess the, the answer to your question as best as I can is, first of all, hopefully that, that is the case that we're, there's a lot of overflow, a lot of demand. But in terms of the auto parts and retails, so I've talked to the, the tenant who is, is running it and he told me, and I, I don't, I don't want to put any words in his mouth, but from what I understood, he doesn't want to spend, he didn't want to spend the money to essentially put the retail aspect of it back in where they're selling auto parts. And I'm getting off a little bit of your, your tangent, Don, but he does plan on reopening the retail aspect or the retail side of the, of the business. It just, he didn't want to invest, you know, more than fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to do so until he knew that the minor auto repair could ultimately move forward. So that's the answer on that. And then moving forward, I mean, when, if there's a queue or they're missing parts, et cetera. I think if I, if, if it were me that were in charge of the business, I think that there has to be some sort of communication in a queue of, okay, well, I can't get my car serviced today, so I need to bring it back, you know, whenever there is time or the part can't get delivered, so there's no longer an overflow of, of cars that are building up around that building. And I'm not a super familiar with the auto repair industry, but I, I have noticed through observation that a lot of these auto repair places, like you mentioned, have a lot of cars built up and parked on their, on their lots. And I just don't think that's very feasible for the 701 ninth building, given the, the obscurity of, of the, the parking areas and where it's at. So I would recommend to the tenant and I will recommend to the tenant that any, any sort of overflow or if there's missing parts, like you mentioned, that there needs to be communication for them to come back at a later date or ultimately they can go somewhere else.
Yeah, that would probably work out and a lot of the time that might work out. The only problem is if you go into a store and you get set up and do this type of thing, you're going to have to wait your turn and if the parts need to be ordered, they don't send you off and say, come back next week and we'll have the parts. I mean, you have to keep yourself in line and that's where this issue comes up as the, all the rig, all the people that you're trying to get in here to this business, which I hope you do. But the, the thing of it is, there is going to be problems with that, I think. And with, there's the parking and people being out there and waiting their turn and the whole bit. You're going to, you might have ten, twelve cars out there waiting to get in to get serviced and, and oil changes don't take that long, but you got to wait your turn. So all that type of thing of what we're talking about is very well can happen. So that needs, I'm thinking that part needs to be addressed. And I let it go at that. Also concerned about this, this tank that you have for 400 gallons. What is the plan for this tank? What do you plan to do with it? It's 400 gallons, what are you going to put in it?
Used oil.
Okay.
And then the plan in terms of, of having it replaced through EPA guidelines. They, they have these third parties that actually come and I'm not sure if they take the entire crate and replace with a new, with a new one, or they actually siphon it onsite. I'm not entirely sure, but I, we have been in contact with companies to take care of that.
Okay. Also, I'd like to know in regard to this same product deal we're doing here. Evidently, there was letters sent out to the neighborhood that were 300 feet or approximately 300 feet from your business. I don't know, has that actually been done? Was, was there letters? Can, can the city verify to me that they actually sent letters out to the people in the neighborhood so they are aware of this?
Please.
Thank you, Chair, and Nicole Stickney with AHBL. We did create a mailing list of all property owners within 300 feet of the site. We provided that information and a letter to the clerk, who was Patrick Baugus, how I say his last name. And so I cannot attest to whether or not those were actually dispatched, but we did provide that information with clear directions and how that could be sent out.
I believe that we would have received that in our packet. If there were people opposed, go ahead, JB.
Yes, this is JB, Deputy City Clerk. Yes, those, those letters were mailed out. I mailed them out myself.
Okay, so if we would have had opposed people, it would have been in our packet and they would be here to physically verbally oppose it.
Yeah, nobody, nobody came forward on that issue.
Thank you for that, both of you.
I appreciate the idea, but I wanted to make sure that we did that because people that they have any concerns or something would be here and I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure that it happened.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, JB.
So Alex, people are going to have to make an appointment, aren't they?
I mean, if, if the demand is where we hope it is, yes.
Yeah, they'll have to make an appointment if they need a, you know, something's going out or something, then that part could be ordered and then you schedule them down the road so their car is not going to be sitting there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was understanding what you were trying to say.
Yes, sorry if that wasn't clear, but yes, that's.
No, but that's, yeah, so they're not going to leave their car there. They'll take their car. Once the part comes in, your parts in, let's schedule a time.
Yes.
Coming up, get her fixed.
That's a good point because the tire store does that. If they know it's coming in the next day, they have your car overnight. But, you know, they make appointments. That makes sense.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for the gentleman? Any more, Don?
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Okay. Are we sure nobody else has any more questions for the gentleman? Thank you. Okay, so with that, the testimony portion of this hearing is now closed at 6:29. And the subject is now open for discussion by the commission.
Well, I think that we've had a lot of our, it's Michelle McLeod, Commissioner McLeod. I think a lot of our answers have been answered and I think our only concern would be to prepare down the road for a run over lot. I think that would be my recommendation. I think that would be my recommendation and revision that you have some sort of plan for that so that it doesn't become an issue. Other than that, it's a good idea and I hope it works out well.
And I, I'll speak to the, the overflow lot issue though, because, uh, scheduling books a whole lot cheaper than real estate.
Yes, exactly.
I think that could be alleviated through administrative management versus trying to invest in leasing or purchasing other property to park vehicles, but that's just my perspective.
I think that was a good point you made, Michelle. I, I, I thank you for that, that's very good.
Thank you, Don.
Any other? Okay, well with that, are you ready for a motion?
I recommend the motion to move to accept the staff report prepared by the conditional use permit. Application review adopted all the suggestions, findings and of fact, and forward the application to the city council with the recommendation of approval.
I second that.
Do we need to do a vote or a roll call?
We, we will.
We're going to have a roll call on the vote.
Uh, Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The yeses have it.
Okay. Yes. Passes. That, that hearing is closed and we move on to another one.
What's the next one?
Uh, the next one is a legislative hearing. And it is on the residential high density district. In a moment, and I'll move into that.
Make sure it doesn't have to do with the development.
No, the bad stuff, that's smooth. It's, I think that, yeah. Yeah, let's not confuse this and worse. Right? Okay. Let's see, I'm trying to make sure I get, okay, we're going to the residential high density standards and so. Okay. Tonight we're going to, um, have a legislative hearing on the proposed revision of Benton City Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-four point two four R three residential high density district. And, um, the procedure for public hearings involving a legislative matter shall, uh, be as follows. The public hearing for the proposed revision of the Benton City Municipal Code, Chapter twenty point two four R three residential high density district is now open at six thirty-three. All persons wishing to be heard, uh, will be given an opportunity during the hearing. We will proceed in our orderly fashion and I would like to ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. When you address the commission, begin by stating your name and, and address. And please speak slowly and clearly into the microphone. The purpose of the hearing is for the planning commission to hear and consider part pertinent facts and to take action on the proposal. The order of speaking will be the staff presentation, then comments from the proponents, oh, opponents and any others wishing to speak, and then questions from the planning commissioners. Uh, first, we'd like to, uh, review the staff report, report. Um, with that, I, I feel, for Nicole, please.
Thank you. Again, my name's Nicole Stickney, I'm with AHBL. We were on, on call, uh, planners for the city. And, um, this is another one of those items that has, uh, kind of spilled over time wise, but we are, um, looking forward to hopefully moving this along. Um, as you may recall, you had a workshop on this item back in August, uh, and looked over it in detail. We had scheduled a public hearing for September, um, that had to be postponed until this month. Just to summarize.
May I ask you to speak up, please?
Certainly, I can do that. This is better?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for letting me know. Um, the, the, I want to explain that, um, we were looking at residential design standards for, um, a variety of the residential zoning districts in town. And then we came and we were looking at, um, the R three district specifically and noticed that there really were some issues that needed to be resolved. And so these, these items have kind of come in tandem to you, um, and are related. So the real important, um, changes that we're proposing here are, um, adding a single family residential as an allowed use in the R three's district. Um, limited, limiting multifamily structures to eight dwelling units per building, requiring a site plan review for structures that are taller than thirty feet, removing motels as a conditional use. Presumably those would be, um, better cited in the commercial district. Providing, um, some specific guidelines for recreational area requirements, limiting the max building height to forty feet, so you can't have as many floors as the code currently would allow. Um, repealing the section on high-rise apartments altogether and also adding sections for design requirements and site review. I feel like these really fit in well with some of the, um, goals and policies that are already containing your comprehensive plan. Um, we think that, you know, there's a lot more development going on in, in Benton City. Certainly there's, um, interest in developing certainly areas that are zoned R three and it's important to make sure that the development regulations are in place so that we don't see something come in and get permitted and then have regrets that we didn't have, uh, a little bit more meat on the bone, if you will, in terms of the development requirements. So again, there was a workshop back in June. Um, we've, uh, processed this according to all of the requirements, including sending notice to the State Department of Commerce, uh, that this was a, uh, pending review. Um, this has gone through a CIPA, um, environmental review and there has been, um, public comment is given. So our recommendation is that you do hold a public hearing on this code amendment. Um, of course, consider back all of the information discussion that took place in the workshop that even though it doesn't need to be repeated here today during the public hearing, that is a part of the whole thing because this is a legislative matter. And, you know, any of these opinions and, um, statements that have been made, um, should be something that you want to reflect on. And then our suggested action at this point is that following the public hearing, you make a recommendation to city council that the proposed changes, which have been provided with red lines, be approved via adoption with ordinance. We have a suggested motion available for you. Um, I don't think I probably need to go into too much other detail, but I'm here and ready to answer questions that may come up. However, there is one extra thing I wanted to highlight tonight and this is kind of new. Um, I was talking with a colleague who went to a planning conference recently and I mentioned, yeah, we're looking at adding single family residential dwelling units in the R three district. Um, I think in Benton City, there are some instances of this already and those would technically be legal non-conforming uses if they're not listed in the code. And so listing it in the code as we've recommended could be a good remedy. However, my colleague pointed out that they were talking a lot about the housing crisis at the work, at the conference that she attended. And there has been, um, a trend where some cities are really trying to hold the line on their multifamily residential areas and not allow single family residential so that, um, there are places sort of reserved, if you will, for these projects that, um, potentially could be more affordable. Um, so I just wanted to give you some food for thought here. Um, with the housing crisis, states and cities are rethinking zoning to make housing more affordable and accessible. Historically, single family homes have dominated the housing scene largely due to local zoning codes that have been unchanged for decades. And now with limited supply of housing, the costs have been increasing dramatically. Um, Benton City has seen an increase in housing costs, both buying and renting. Um, so how do cities house their people? Well, one solution to rising rents, a lack of housing stock isn't simple. There are several ways a city can act. Um, cities across the US do need a more diverse housing mix. Um, and so in Benton City, you might consider that one path towards sustaining affordability while maintaining your natural growth is to keep the R three high density zone reserved for multifamily housing and not expand it to allow single family residences. Uh, as I mentioned with the limited housing of land, that it's zoned R three, it, you might think it's best to keep those opportunities for the multifamily housing. The city does have other zones that could accommodate single family homes. Um, retaining the intent of a multifamily R three district could provide benefit to the single family zones and existing housing. So I kind of just wanted to present this to you, it was kind of a point, counterpoint. So you could consider different views and different sides of that, um, arrangement. It, it was my suggestion at the beginning to add, um, single family homes into R three. Um, I think in terms of my personal recommendation, I'm not changing that. But again, I do want to be fair and balanced and kind of present these different sides and perspectives to you so that you can carefully weigh that in terms of your recommendation to city council. That concludes my presentation, but as I mentioned, I'm happy to walk through any of the changes. Um, I don't want to belabor it because I know that you've already done a lot of, uh, great work in a previous meeting, um, but happy to help the commission along as much as possible. Again, we do recommend, um, that the planning commission recommend approval of these changes to the council. Thank you.
Any questions, Nicole?
I don't know that I have questions. I know that, um, the R three is important so that there are more, um, homes. I know that there's a lot of controversy going on between single family homes, whether we want fifty-one in a certain, like a thirteen acre area or whether we, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
For us to do our chit chat.
Yeah, all right, that'd probably be more helpful.
All right, at this point, then.
I don't have, I reserve the right to have questions later.
There you go. Um, did we, uh, I'm just, uh, before we begin the public comment portion, will the clerk please indicate if there were, uh, any written materials that were submitted or that anyone wishes to submit without speaking?
Not to my knowledge.
Uh, at this point, uh, floor is open for anyone from the public to, um, participate of it or comment in this meeting. Yes, please. Please come to the microphone, tell us who you are.
Where you live.
Where you live, what you're doing here, what?
What I drive, late for dinner.
Um, Alex Weaver, five oh four Ninth Street. Um, Nicole, I just had a question, given the, I guess, the yang of, of what you just said. Um, why do you still stand by, uh, allowing single family in the, in R three?
Look into the mic.
Sorry. Uh, why do you still recommend, uh, R three zoning to change to allow a single family housing?
These are just considerations that the council, uh, commission may want to consider. Um, first and foremost, I believe there are existing single family homes in those areas that are zoned R three. And unless we put something in the code, um, they remain legal non-conforming. One solution, one remedy to that is that we could say, single family homes which were established prior to the date of this ordinance. You know, we could do that to allow those kind of as a grandfather basis. Um, so that's, that's one way around it. But, um, to really directly answer your question, I like flexibility. I like property owner rights, things like that. It has to weigh against other objectives in the city, like affordable housing, things like that. Um, and that's not up to me to decide, obviously, it's for this group to weigh and for the city council to weigh. Um, but those are some of the things that come to the top of my mind, um, in terms of, uh, flexibility for the community.
And just to, uh, so for R three that I, um, also, uh, I guess, uh, experienced it myself, but a lot of the commercial district is also having that issue as well. Um, has there been any discussion about doing something similar with commercial in terms of putting a date in? Um, and any date before this is legal, I guess this is totally off topic.
I think that's a whole nother meeting. Cause that's not on our agenda and we can't address that. But that's a good question.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on a line out there that I can't see? Okay, hearing. That's why I can't tell.
That's Margaret.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, are you?
Yes, my name is Mary Peterson and I am at one zero zero one Babs. And I just have one cur, one kind of small question. I think if you're doing something R three, you need to consider where you're putting R three. If you're putting it in a neighborhood that's going to completely be impacted or if you're putting it on the outskirts, which is not quite so impacted. And that's my only question right now.
That's a really good question. Can I address that?
Yes, please, Michelle.
Actually, we're not out to pick out neighborhoods to rezone. What happens is people buy property and they come to the council that comes to the commissioners to go over these properties to see if they can be rezoned. Do you see where, where we're at here? We're not actually picking certain properties to be rezoned. It's brought to us by developers that buy the property that want to get the property rezoned or, or owners of property that want to rezone their properties. So we in no way go out and pick out property to rezone. It's brought in front of the council who brings it in front of us. We look at the information that's brought to us, we study it, we think it over, we talk it over, we talk it over with the citizens. And then we make a discern, de- determination whether property is rezoned or not. So, um, we only addressed what is, comes in our packet and that's all.
Okay. Well, I just hope the council will, when they get all the information, will really, really consider this, um, particular on Babs Avenue because it is drastically going to change every single house around here.
Well, right now we're not at liberty to talk about certain.
Okay, okay, but.
But we'll have it later on that you're going to be interested.
I just, I'm just want the council to be aware of this and I'll be, I'll, I'll stop talking now. Thank you very much.
Any, any recommendations that we send through the chair commissioner? Uh, the council has the authority and power to override our, uh, recommendations. So there's a whole process that go, we go through. We don't make the determinations. We just make recommendations.
But I do, I do encourage you to keep talking, keep talking to the city. You talk to the council, you talk to the commission, you just keep talking and they, you will be heard.
Yes, watch for that new date.
Yes. Will you be, uh, doing the date this, tonight? Let, so we can let the neighbors know?
No, we don't. We, we don't do that.
Okay.
The city does that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else online or in the audience that would like to comment? Is there somebody online? I'm sorry, I can't.
I can't be that far either.
Uh, what, uh, may I speak, uh, uh, Genie Wallace?
Uh, well, let's, uh, get the public, uh, comments out of the way and then we'll bring it in for the commission, um, portion discussion, is that okay, Don?
That'll be great, thank you.
Okay. So I guess at this point, no more public comments that I can see or hear. Okay. No more testimony. Okay, I'm going to close this for the, um, the public portion of it now commissioners. Yeah, all commissioners want to talk about. Yes, Don, please talk to us. Michelle. They do.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're getting participation from the public in regard to this and Genie and, and Michelle, all of you. I am, ask everybody to, to do exactly what we're asking them to do and take and participate with this. Find out if you have a concern about any issue, what, like what we're talking about right now, you need to be able to, to get your voice. You need to be able to get your voice heard and we will, just like they have mentioned, we will listen to you. We want your information so we can better serve you. And with this most important to all of us that we give you that opportunity and you get that opportunity. And we look forward to that. I see that there's people in the audience, I can't tell anymore, but I'm sure if they have concerns. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're about and we want to hear from you. So please do that.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm Commissioner McLeod and. We've done a lot of work on this and I would really not want to discriminate against single family housing. In the R three area, I don't want it exclusively to be for apartments or for condominiums or. Anything like that. I would not want to exclude a developer from developing. Single family housing or even a person who buys property in the R three. Wanting to have their, their little home built. I would not want to discriminate against them, so I would want that to be in the. Chapter, we call it now, instead of ordinances, where a single family housing. Is acceptable in R three, that we would not discriminate against that.
Yes, that's correct.
Anybody else have anything to say about that?
No, I, I agree with you. We discussed last meeting. Commissioner Lynn, the importance of having. Houses built that are affordable for, for everyone. Not just some of these new developments that are getting, that are higher priced homes. We want to be able to have. Everyone in the area to be able to purchase homes and, and we did discuss that the last time and I still think that that's really important.
And it is, it is kind of hard to have a lavish home in an R three because of the spaces. That, how it spaced out for the. One, two, three car garage and we talked extensively about that last time, but I don't want to discriminate against the. Family who bought that acreage that want their home there. So I think that if we were going to have revisions, that would be the only one I would make.
I didn't see the text. Can you refer to text within the body of the document?
I can't because I'm looking at my phone, but.
And that was my point.
She might be able to. Okay, state your name, please.
Excuse me, Nicole, could you get the mic closer to you, please?
Yeah, I just repeated my name. Page one eighteen of the PDF, if that's helpful. That's where we find the red line revisions that are proposed for the chapter, chapter twenty dot two four. And the section that we're mentioning here specifically is section twenty dot two four dot zero two zero. Where it says permitted uses and the draft that was provided to you does have single family residential added in.
Okay, thank you.
If you like it like it is, then you can keep it that way. And if I may, I just wanted to also add, because I may not have presented this as part of the bigger picture. Right now lands that are zoned R three, they have a pretty wide entitlement, especially with that whole section about high rise apartments. I don't know if somebody would actually build that, but they could. Given the parameters of the current code and it could be quite a massive project. I think that these changes to twenty twenty four will help. I hope give some comfort to some folks in the city who might be kind of alarmed to find out how. Permissive the current code is because it really does put some more parameters into. Still facilitating high density development, but in such a way that it wouldn't. Have potential impacts that couldn't be otherwise addressed, if that makes sense.
That, that does make sense because when I was reading it, I felt like that brought anyone that wanted to do anything. Out of the norm back to us for revisions.
Yeah, and you don't want to. Processes just for the sake of processes, but really. What we've tried to do is a balanced approach to make sure that concerns. When they do arise in the community can be addressed appropriately.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we move on, I want to make sure we all have a common understanding because. What I heard you girls request was what I thought she just presented was already in there. So what is existing now is what you were hoping.
Yes, yes, I just wanted it clarified. I'm in total agreement.
So we're all agreeing that it's what we want, okay. Dawn, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion about that at all or clarifications needed for me? Okay, with that, I think it's already ready for a motion. I feel I'm ready. I'll move to accept the staff report and propose the amendment of Benton City Municipal Code, chapter. Twenty point two, two, four, R three residential high density district. Adopt the suggested findings of fact in the report and forward the. Proposed code amendments to the city council with the recommendation of approval.
I second that.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, we.
Commissioner Allen? Yes. Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. I'm moving on. And the final hearing of the evening is regarding the legislative hearing for the adoption of the Benton City Municipal Code. Chapter twenty points, you residential design standards. I don't have a little script, so I'm just going to use the one we just had, so if it's wrong. Somebody will correct me. The public hearing for the proposed revision of Benton City Municipal Code, chapter. Twenty point six two residential design standards is now open at. All persons wishing, wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity during the hearing. We will proceed in an orderly. Fashion and I would like to ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. When you address the commission, begin by stating your name and address and speaking slowly and clearly into the microphone. The purpose of the hearing is for the planning commission to hear and consider pertinent facts and take action on the proposal. The order of speaking will be staff presentation, then comments from the proponents, opponents and any others wishing to speak. Then questions from the planning commission members. First, we will review the staff report. And again, I will ask for Nicole to come to the microphone again. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, once again, the commission tonight has an opportunity to kind of finish up some work that you've been engaged in for some time. Just versus a point of clarification, this is not a revision to chapter twenty dot six two, this would be a proposed new chapter adding to the. To the zoning code because you do not currently have these types of residential design standards. You've gone through. The proposal before, there was a public hearing held previously on this. Actually, there's been. Yep, different, different opportunities to speak, so this is again another opportunity, but again. It's kind of a snowball effect, right? Like gather up all the information, all the study and work that's been done over the, the summer months. There were some clarifications that were requested about manufactured homes at the last meeting, so we've endeavored to answer that in the staff report. And made some changes that were discussed because you did go through an in-depth discussion at the last meeting. In your packet, you were also given comments that were provided, written comments, I think they appear kind of early in your packet, but those pertain to this matter at hand. And once again, we have prepared a. Ordinance and then that new chapter twenty dot six two. You will see red lines in this because that reflects the changes of the original draft copy. And this updated draft copy which has been changed according to your. Review and requests. So we think we've got everything narrowed in just right. And we are hoping that you would forward a recommendation tonight if you're able to. So that this could be referred over to the city council. It's possible that if that timeline is agreeable. The council could potentially pass the ordinance if they felt it was, it was fit to do so. Prior to the moratorium date coming due. For, as you know, there's a moratorium against. Permits being accepted in the residential zoning districts for certain projects. So with that being said, again, I'm here to help with any questions, clarifications, but I don't think I, I need to belabor all of the details. I think you have opportunity to go through that. And I do have slides I can, I can present tonight if that's helpful, but I'll just leave it up to you to direct me what would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That might be good for the public to see the slides.
Would the public like to see the slides? These few. There's four slides.
Okay, I saw them.
Is there anybody online and they're in the audience that would like to see the slides?
Pictures of houses.
You have a presentation that would show where currently we have R three designated in the city and then it just highlights. These changes to the permitted conditional uses and so forth, but it's like, it's otherwise identical to your staff report.
Well, I would feel comfortable at this point making a motion to approve this, these design standards and forward them to. The city council for approval.
Does, does any of the commissioners have anything to say about it before her recommendations go through? I think we pretty much went over this and over this.
Several times.
Yeah.
Then I'll go ahead and second it.
Now you can go for a vote.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen? No. Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Oh, I guess.
Yes, the motion has passed.
Okay, with that, I guess we have another section of the. Meeting on general commission comments discussion. May want to talk about anything commissioners?
Well. What we just passed, for instance, we've had several meetings and talked in depth about. Glazement of the front of properties, whether you can have glazement in your garage that. Suits the mount for your home. We've talked about roof pitches in depth. Which has all been in agreement and. We've had extensive meetings about this, so everything that was readed out, we already. Agreed upon with the council, with the commissioners, the council, the community. So there were no gray areas in the red areas. So I feel really good about the fact that it passed through because it was very democratic. Across the board. And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience want to say anything, any of the staff? Or anything the commissioners can do to work better with you or? Please come forward and introduce yourself. Tell us where you live.
My name is Randy Peterson. I live at one zero zero one Babs and you notice there's some. Fresh people here and we're just trying to understand the process tonight, so we just came, we've got a situation coming up. That is being addressed. And we just are learning the, what the planning commission does and how the process and the flow goes and so we can. Follow on our part and know what our, our situation, how to handle it, so.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Our support staff here, Nicole, a little too dressed here.
And I'm not going to talk about the content of the request, but merely the procedural issue that's at hand. And what has occurred was the determination of non-significance which was issued under the CIPA State Environmental Policy Act. Was appealed. And we talked to the attorney and we looked at the code and it appears that because of that. The public hearing for the item will be held at the city council together with the appeal hearing. So it'll be rescheduled and re-noticed and it will go directly to council as a super review of the. Request and the CIPA determination.
Thank you for your clarification because as commissioners, we didn't know that. We just only address what the council sends to us and they sent us that we weren't addressing it. That was it.
It was canceled for this evening.
Yes.
So there will be an additional notice and that's my expectation going forward. Other things could happen. We're in contact with the applicant, but we will ensure that notices are provided completely and timely for any future. Changes if there are any to the CIPA determination as well as, you know, public hearing, notice all of that.
Thank you so much. That was helpful. We're, we're all wanting to know.
Wanted you to know that we were here to learn about the process and. Several of us are.
Well, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for helping us learn too.
It's important, like the things that we just decided was a group of people that came from the audience. That helped us make the determinations.
My name is Diana Alkisar. I live at nine zero eight Babs Avenue. And I want to know who we have a guarantee for that that is going to happen because since all this has started. We have been notified by other neighbors that there were letters that were supposed to be, had gone out for things that they were doing that we never received.
See, we, we're not on that end. We don't know what happened. But we will be notified of the date of the next. Meeting about the situation, like we really don't know.
Okay, because I'm just concerned because in the past, the other letters that should have been received were never received about other issues. And that's what I'm, I want to guarantee that we will get notified that this is not gonna. You can, I'm sure you can understand my distrust because the process has not worked in the past. And it's just kind of coming to light now that it has not worked in the past, so why would we have faith that it's going to work this time? That's why I'm looking for some. Guarantee that we will be notified because of.
There might not have been time to notify you in between finding out what she said about the situation and get us getting our packets.
About other issues though too, because I talked to other neighbors. There's other neighbors that have done work on their property that I did, that they have told us, they were surprised when they found out we were not notified about it. Now granted, it wasn't a bunch of houses that went up and it was something that was, went up and it's no longer there. But they were surprised that we were not notified about that.
See, unfortunately, we only address what's in our packets and.
What they feed us.
What we, what's fed us and we did read about what's going on, but we were. Told we wouldn't be talking about it tonight and I think her explanation was great because we had no explanation at all. Other than it'll be a later date and it'll be the city council, which is a higher government, we're the legislature. other than it'll be a later date and it'll be the city council, which is a higher government. We're the legislature.
I understand that.
For the legislative body of Benton City. So we think over all this stuff for the council, but in this case, there is uh, there's a roadblock and they're gonna discuss it and they might trickle down to us and they might not.
I was just wondering if there would be a guarantee that we would be getting a notice. I'm guessing there's not a guarantee.
Well, I wish I could say that.
Yes.
So you are guaranteed. Okay, that's what I wanted.
Excuse me, ma'am, for the record, would you, would you repeat your name again?
Diana Alkassar.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the notices and the mailing list will be prepared by A H B L, a consulting company. We will provide that information to the clerk. If you would like to talk to them about how they dispatch notices or other places where you can receive notice, you are welcome to do so. But we do ask them to put these types of things on the website. Um, that there is a new clerk, so you are encouraged to reach out to that or other staff members. I don't see that end of things. I don't dispatch the mail for the city. Okay?
And I understand that. That's why I was asking, is there someone that could guarantee it? So there clearly is not a guarantee because we're concerned about other people that don't could.
I can't guarantee because I don't work for the city.
That's, I understand that. That's why I was saying, no one.
We don't work for the city. We do not work for the city. Our, no one's in our pocket. But the people.
Okay, anything else, any other? Nothing.
No. Well, then we're a totally neutral, neutral party.
Yeah.
Who just reads the information.
But we are open to encouragement.
Most of the decisions we made on the thing we just voted in was due to this people that came from the public and from the contracting, literally.
Yeah, and that's the way it should be.
Yep.
Seriously. Please.
We're, we're fair people.
Encourage, not all the time.
We're mostly fair.
Yeah.
Uh, no, no further discussion from staff, public, county commission. Anybody online? Dawn, Margaret? No, everybody's good. I'm gonna adjourn if we're good.
Jenny, Jeannie?
Yes.
This Dawn, Allen. Uh, the lady that just came up and spoke, I uh, I, I encourage her and everyone. Uh, even though we cannot do this right now, of what she wants done, I understand that. Uh, we only can do what our package allows us to do. And that's as far as we can go, but that doesn't change the fact that if she has uh, a problem with something and she wants to get it taken care of or get it ironed out, by all means do what she is doing and we, we, I think, will agree that we encourage people to do so. If they have issues that they want to get taken care of or whatever the case may be with what's going on, uh, that needs to happen. It must happen, but otherwise we won't know what, what people are thinking or what they really want. So.
Exactly.
And I don't want people to feel like they're not going to be heard because I, I want you to understand, I know this body of people I've worked with for a long time and they have their hearts in the right place and they will do what it takes to, to make sure that this takes, gets taken care of, at least by our recommendations of nothing else.
Well, yes, and we get a book. We get a book every month. And it helps to see the people that are in it. You know, because otherwise you're just looking at words in a book.
Yes.
A very thick book.
Yes, very thick book.
Alright, thank you, Dawn.
You bet.
Everybody, public, commissioners, staff, you're doing great.
Michelle, Michelle, I meant, uh, I'm sorry, Jeannie. Uh, what we need to do before we close is have a, a first and second and then a, a vote.
For?
To close the meeting. Adjourn.
Okay. I make a motion, we close the meeting.
I second that. Let's take a vote.
Thank you for.
Hey.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion has been taken.
Yeah, I remember that part. I thought we were done, we're done.
But we had, we, we have not been doing it, but that's the proper way of doing it.
Thank you.
That's very helpful.